To return to in-person meetings. I have another statement I'm gonna read, but first, we're gonna have a short invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pray with me, please. Father God, we come to you this evening to thank you for your strength, determination, and discipline to fight through what we're considering tough season that we don't understand. We pray for the safety and health of everybody near and far. And Father God, we thank you for the talent and strength of any and every single person that has to go out every day and take good, real good care of us. We pray for their safety, pray for their health. And if anybody and everybody has a little extra prayer they can throw in for Councilman Collier, it will be greatly appreciated. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is saying one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you very much, guys. As this will be a different style of meeting, and not everyone has access to video, we need to take turns speaking and make sure that you clearly identify yourself in speaking and making any motions. Please wait for an appropriate pause after someone finished speaking before you begin to speak. And there is also a raise your hand feature that you may use if you would like to be recognized to speak. And to eliminate any background noise, it would be a good idea to mute yourself when you're not speaking. For any residents who may be joining us tonight, welcome and bear with us as we navigate through the, this new way of conducting public meeting business. We will not be taking any public comments tonight, as this is a special call meeting to discuss matters relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. So we will mute all those who are joining us, but you're welcome to listen in. Our regularly scheduled council meeting will be Monday night, April 13th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. If you have public comment that you would like for council to hear, you can submit that in writing to the town clerk by 4:00 PM on April 13th, or you may raise your hand to be heard during the public comment section. Again, thanks for joining us. And before we get started, I would ask anybody that can hear me, when you're speaking or getting ready to speak, make sure your phone, cellphone is turned down. Again, thanks for joining us. We'll get started. Ms. Lawrence is gonna address the first item on the agenda.
I didn't hear that.
We're turning it over to you for the first item.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? It's Jason Hamm, the town attorney.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, it's a strange new world, and here we are. Kudos to Angela and her team for setting up what is by far the most sophisticated of any of the conference systems that I so far attended for various localities. You hear me talk a lot about the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and about closed sessions and what we can and cannot do. So, Virginia Freedom of Information Act is an open government law designed to require that the public allowed to be present at meetings and to require the council be together. Things that our governor has declared illegal and our president has discouraged. So, there is a Virginia Code Section 15 to 1413 that provides that notwithstanding any contrary provision of law, a locality made by ordinance provide a method to assure continuity in its government in the event of a disaster. The Virginia Attorney General on March 20th has provided an opinion that this means that you can meet electronically, which is contrary to FOIA, not have the public present, also contrary to FOIA, and pass this ordinance, which you have before you tonight. And the ordinance essentially allows you to conduct your business electronically without a quorum of the members being present. And it provides that we're gonna do the best we can with respect to public comments and public notices, but those public comments and public notices will be provided via email or telephone or some other electronic means. It's reasonably flexible as to the means, but the intent is to provide as much public input as possible. Now, this is a special meeting where we wouldn't normally have public comment anyway. And as an aside, public comment is not required at Virginia law. It's something that most localities do, and I would certainly encourage you to continue that, especially during this difficult time. So, that's basically what this ordinance would do. Allow you to do what you're doing now, allow you to conduct your business electronically, not using your normal procedures until six months after the disaster. And hopefully, disaster ends soon. Does anyone have any questions about it?
So, to clarify, it's not just for the duration of this period, but we continue to do it after this period is over to make sure that we're through it.
That is correct. And, you know, it's, the law talks about six months after the disaster, but, you know, what exactly does that mean in a context of an ongoing disaster? So, I have drafted this basically for, to make it as strong as possible under the statute, and that talks about six months after the disaster. I would certainly encourage you that as soon as it is, you know, the governor, for example, rescinds the stay-at-home order. I mean, this is not an easy way to conduct business. So, obviously, we're not gonna keep it on up for a day longer than is absolutely necessary. Any other questions? Now, something very similar to this has been passed by three localities already. It's about to be passed by the city of Winchester as well. So, this is... There are localities that are claiming to stop all state and federal law requirements with respect to deadlines applicable to them. I'm not sure we can even do that. Also, don't think it's necessary. An example of that would be you've got a certain period of time to act on people's zoning applications. I don't see why we can't still continue to conduct the business of the town, and I feel very uncomfortable doing anything beyond what the Attorney General has told us that we can do.
Angela, are you seeing any issues with getting town work done on the timelines that we typically get it done?
Not so far. We're working, as many people as can are working from home, but if somebody were to have a zoning application, Krista could come in and meet with them if it's not something they can do online. But we planned ahead of time and tried to get everything that we could do online. I will add to what Jason said is that BML and the Attorney General both put out this directive, and it's, this ordinance is being passed by every locality I know, or one similar to this.
So, one other clarification. This applies not just to town council, but also to other town boards and committees. So, planning commission as one example. The IDA is debatable. The IDA is a separate political subdivision. It'd be better if the IDA did not meet during this time. If they need to, Angela and I can talk. There are local government attorneys that are taking the position that this would apply to the IDA. I'm not comfortable with that because, again, it is, per Virginia Code, a separate political subdivision, as separate as the county is from us. So, I don't feel comfortable with that, but if for some reason they have to meet, then we can discuss that. Otherwise, it applies generally to other boards and committees so that they can also meet electronically, and I would strongly encourage them to do so. I think to do otherwise sets a terrible example for our community.
And we did cancel the April EDA meeting that was just to call people together to tell them what was going on since our last meeting. We canceled that, and I don't think they'll be meeting anytime soon.
Well, in most of the IDAs I represent, Chindole County IDA is very different, but most of them meet every year or two, anyway, so.
Call for a motion?
Motion.
Sam has lost signal again. Was that RJ that?
Yes.
Made the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Sam, you can come down here and use my computer. Who seconded?
Carrie.
Okay. Sam, do you wanna come down here?
Okay, I think I'm back.
Okay. Okay.
So, we need a roll call?
So, RJ and Carrie.
RJ and Carrie. And this is for the passing of the ordinance.
All right. Ms. Worby?
Hi. Sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Ogrin?
Hi.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mr. Fletchall?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Daley?
Hi.
And Mayor Lee?
Hi. I apologize for losing signal. So, motion approved for the passing of the ordinance. Does that take us, Angela, make sure I'm going right, discussion of the consideration of appointment coordinator?
Yes, so, the county is the emergency management manager, but in reviewing things, the attorney suggested that we appoint a coordinator of emergency management. I didn't see anything in the records that we had done that previously, so that is before you tonight. And that's just to designate one person who will coordinate any emergency management issues.
Can I speak to this briefly? So, the way it flushes out is, and you've probably seen in the news, that some towns are declaring local emergencies. And the way it works out is that counties, cities, and towns over a population of 5,000 who have their own separate emergency management director are basically the ones that are legally allowed to declare a local emergency. We fall under Rockingham County, but the state code does require that the town appoint a coordinator of emergency management, and I suggest that that be Angela.
So, it'll be a coordinator of emergency management?
Yes, sir.
And this would also be if we have a FEMA-related flooding and things like that, right?
It applies to any emergency.
I'll make a motion to appoint Angela to the, as the coordinator of emergency management.
Thank you, Carrie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Zach?
It was.
Thank you, Zach. Ms. Hall and Dega, we need a roll call, please.
All right. Everybody wanna unmute? All right. Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mr. Fletchall?
Zach's trying to figure out this new computer thing.
Zach, could you unmute to vote for us, please?
He looks frozen.
Yeah, we lost this.
Okay. All right. How about Ms. Worby?
Hi.
Mr. Ogrin?
Hi.
Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Mr. Fletchall?
Hi.
Very good. And Mayor Lee?
Hi.
Thank you.
So, a motion passed to appoint Angela Lawrence as coordinator of emergency management. Item C is consideration of possibility emergency measures to ease the financial burden for residents and/or businesses. Angela, we're gonna speak on?
Sure, I'll start, and then the attorney will add to this as well. As you know, you all got an email from one of the local business owners here who was asking for some kind of assistance in getting through some very difficult financial time for local businesses. We had looked at a variety of different fact, issues and factors. As you know, Broadway has, until the end of July, decided not to charge for trash service, and they've also done something else. Oh, meal tax, they relieved the meal tax. So, and that, when I talked to them, was gonna be to the tune of about $90,000 of their budget. So, as I sent to you, we are already on a very tight budget, and then with your package, you received a spreadsheet that shows what our taxes and rates are compared to other localities. And you'll see that our tax rates, our real estate tax rate is lower than every locality. Some buy a lot, except for Broadway has just one cent per 100 lower than us. But our monthly water sewer and trash bill, our minimum bill, is lower than everybody else's. We don't have personal property tax, and everybody else does. We don't have machine and tools tax, cigarette tax, that most other, everybody else does. So, we really don't have a whole lot of room in the budget, but we wanted to bring it to you. The treasurer's office had suggested for our consideration that we show leniency on penalties and interest for delinquent water sewer accounts, and then, secondly, that we not cut off service for people if they let us know that there's a, an issue related to COVID-19. I did have a conversation with the attorney today about the practicality of enforcing that or implementing that, so I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney at this point.
So, obviously, it's for council to decide, and can everyone hear me?
Yes.
It's for council to decide what, if anything, to do here. What you can do, however, is only moving forward. So, the idea that, well, someone hasn't paid their water bill in two months, and we're gonna waive that, you can't do that. All you can do is moving forward, you could set the rate at a very low level, you could set it for free. You can also change real estate tax rates. You can set the penalty for late taxes at zero percent and not charge the penalty. You can waive the penalties for late payments for water and sewer or for other things, or really what you're doing is you're setting those at zero. So, whatever you do has to be looking forward, and the things that are owed today are owed. It's been legally done, it's over with, it has to be paid. So, that's what you can do. Some practical things. The various funding agencies, you're about to do an upgrade on your water plant. I have another municipal client, the town of Newmarket, that's about to spend $4 million on a water tower, and they're gonna probably be able to borrow money at about 1% through a state's, through a state subsidized program. And they don't, haven't been approved for that yet, but that's the expectation. And if not, it'll be maybe 2% through VRA. Those programs require that you charge enough for your water and sewer. And so, Angela has told me that we've already got some issues with that because we take so much out from the general fund, sorry, we take so much out from the water and sewer fund and basically give it to the general fund. And to some extent, that's Dayton, and it's hard to get past, but those actions, as well as having the water and sewer rates too low, do limit your access to this incredibly cheap money that's sometimes available, quite often available from state agencies. So, if you want to help the citizens of Newmarket or of Dayton, excuse me, that by far the best thing to do is to not fiddle with the water and sewer. You can, but those are some of the issues that might arise. The other concern I have is if we reduce late fees or reduce charges, et cetera, obviously the town's massive funding source is Cargill. Everything that council does has to have a rational basis. So, what's the rational basis for reducing the bill for everybody for water and sewer except one person? So, those would be the things that I would caution you on, and most of the other localities that I represent haven't really taken a final position on this. Nobody, typically, people don't have sort of excess money laying around, and neither do we. But if you do want to reduce things, it would be better to do something other than water and sewer related.
I have been emailing on a regular basis with all the town managers in the county. Most of, except for Broadway, most of them are not considering these other actions right now, other than to not have a penalty on, on the water sewer trash bill. And several of them are planning on not turning off water, very similar to what other utilities, we're not, we're not a utility by law, but all the other utilities, like the power companies, are not turning off. But Jason brought up a good point today, I think, is what if Cargill decided they didn't wanna pay their bill for a couple months, would we turn them off? We couldn't do that. So, I mean, we couldn't go without their payments for a couple months, so. I'm open to suggestions from the council. If you don't wanna do anything, that's fine. If you want us to look at other options before next week, we can do that, too, but turn it over to council.
The late payments, I mean, I don't wanna waive any fees or change any fees, but if, if somebody's not able to pay their bill and they still owe it, but they just have to a little bit longer time to pay it. So, you know, payment deferral, you know, or waiving the late charges on, on late payments is an easy way to give some assistance to folks that are having financial issues but not changing anything for our services and our bills. I know in the world that I live in, all the finance companies are offering the payment deferrals on their finance contracts to help people through this. So, it's a, it's an easy way to keep your customers, you know, you know, happy and keep them liquid and keep them, you know, in business. And our guys are just, you know, they're not in business, but if somebody can't pay, they're not charged with late fees on top of interest when they are ready to pay. But, I mean, I don't have an issue, you know, looking at those options.
So, then, you know, and it's good for, if there's more people that wanna do this, we might consider, for example, setting the interest. Again, I'm a little worried about this because it would also apply to Cargill, but setting whatever interest you've charged for late payers at zero or, you know, again, these are, we wanna have a look at.
So, Cargill is a business, that's different than a resident. So, for them to not pay a bill, they would have to show hardship, and if they could show hardship, then they definitely would get a reprieve, you know, they'd get, you know, be able to pay late, but then we'd have bigger issues to worry about as well. I don't, I don't think if we, if we, you know, for late payment charges or remove them, Cargill's all of a sudden gonna say, I don't have to pay it, because when it does come up, they're gonna be owed it, and then they're gonna be six days behind, and then it's gonna be hard for them to catch up on an operating, you know, level.
Well, you have real estate taxes due June 5th. You know, what, one locality that I represent has done is, without changing the due date, they have provided that they're, you know, as long as you pay by sometime in July, I think it was, you don't pay any penalty for paying late. And, you know, that's one kind of good idea because it keeps the revenue stream coming because a lot of those will be paid by escrow anyway. Just one suggestion.
I like that, and so that would just be helpful for the people who don't pay their taxes in escrow, give them a little bit more time to do it?
Correct.
I like that.
So, remember that you're hitting the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, so we would, we would account for any payments that come in July or August back to this year's budget, but once we get into the audit phase and we can't make journal entries and credit them back to this year, then we run into an accounting issue, too.
Yeah, my understanding from, this was Warren County that's probably gonna do this, is that approximately, and again, anything that we come up with today, we're gonna wanna look at, which is good because we have a little time to do it, was that for exactly that issue, you couldn't go past about 30 days, I think it was. And, you know, none of these solutions are great because of the issue that Angela just described to you with respect to the budget.
But Jason and I talked today, and I looked up the budget, about our, our real estate taxes, about $118,000, so if you divide that in half, about almost $60,000 would be due in June.
And I guess Susan has the breakdown of who's paying outside of escrow, because we'd already looked at that one time, so you can make, and so if there's 10% of the people for some reason can't pay out of escrow, you could kind of come up with a number of how much that's gonna affect us on the budget, which is, if 60,000's due and, you know, 80% are paid by escrow and 20% aren't, and, you know, out of those 20%, there's gonna be maybe 10 or 15% might not be able to make it, you know, then we can kind of come up with a number to see how much it's gonna affect us.
Susan's on this call, and I wanna say it's closer to 50%, isn't it, Susan?
Yes. And you also have the folks, not that this matters, but some, some folks pay the entire amount, so, you know, I mean, there are some people that don't pay the second half, they pay it all on the first, the first part.
We could certainly get some figures to you by next week's meeting.
Okay. How difficult will it be for us to manage if we don't get that money when we're supposed to, but hold off? And I, and manage, I mean, from like a fiscal perspective, not a accounting gymnastics perspective?
Well, I think you definitely, I mean, if you go that route, you, there definitely has to be a do-by date eventually. You know, I don't know how to answer that, RJ.
My concern is that if people can't pay in June, it's not gonna be better by August. They will have been unemployed for several months, and whether or not we get that money by August would be challenging. Of course, it depends on how long this, this goes on.
Well, if they, if they can't pay it, and then they can't pay it by that new deadline that we set, they weren't gonna be able to pay it at the original deadline, so we wouldn't have gotten it anyway. And so, like, what is the, what's the positive of keeping this deadline if someone isn't gonna be able to pay it on either, that we charge a late fee and interest on it?
Unless you wanna defer the late penalty, and, I mean, they could go on and on and on, and, you know.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is somebody who can't pay it now, and then we extend it, and they can't pay it then, they couldn't now either.
Well, and then they're six months behind already on their next, however long they're behind on their next payment, so.
Right. So, like, it's almost like it doesn't make a difference from a, from the money we're getting perspective for them to not pay it now or not pay it later, because either way, they're not gonna pay it.
Right.
So, is it really helping?
I mean, it helps in the sense that there isn't an additional charge on top of it, but the lack of that additional charge doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna get the money that we're owed.
Correct.
But that's, that is a burden that we are removing.
The not charging for water and sewer, or sorry, for trash, so that's something we bill monthly?
We do bill that monthly, and we looked at it, if we just quit building from now until the end of the fiscal year, that would be about an $80,000 hit to our budget, isn't that right, Susan? Yeah. That's a lot of money for us to absorb, and that would be not, not collecting that at all, is what people are doing. I would much rather see us relieve some fees or have the late fees and penalties than to just dismiss that. We do pay waste management on a monthly basis. As far as I know, we're gonna continue to pay them on a monthly basis, whether our people pay or not, so that's a different one. I don't know any other localities other than Broadway that are considering that.
So, you know, and I haven't heard a consensus of council by any means that... So, you know, and I haven't heard a consensus of council by any means that, that, that the majority of you of council want to do anything. But if you look at the logistics and the, the trouble you get to with monkeying, with, you know, water and sewer and with real estate taxes and the due dates and all this kind of stuff, you have a fairly simple situation if you wanted to reduce, if you, if you wanted to help your constituents and take a hit at, at your pocketbook, because that's what this is, you know, really about. It would be an easier, much easier thing to either reduce or eliminate the trash collection fee. And the other thought is that that would be something that would hit every resident equally. And it, it wouldn't provide, it would, you know, it's one of those taxes that isn't related to income. So it just sort of helps everybody the same. And it would be less trouble, I think, accounting wise. And certainly there aren't, that isn't regulated the way these other things are.
It is also $16 a month to that constituent. Like it's, it's 80,000 for us and, and not much for the person who's getting that relief.
Good point.
And yeah, I have not, I don't know if council's heard from very many people. We have only heard from one business and new residents that I know of requesting any relief so far. So. And I'm not saying, we don't know how many people are unemployed. We don't know how many people are going to be unemployed, but we haven't had a huge out calling yet. So I don't know if you want to wait or give us some ideas to research. I'm leery of getting rid of a fee when the, if the majority of people in town are still making, still have a job and making money and getting trash service. And we're relieving $80,000 worth of revenue versus delaying some others without penalty.
Yep.
That's your call as a policy person now.
My concern is we already know that we're going to take a hit on meals tax. And then if we're going to take an additional hit by, you know, any other alleviating of any other tax, that's going to, you know, compound that loss.
Right. The, the localities that have waived the meals tax are doing so more to encourage residents to go out and eat locally than they are trying to help the restaurant itself. Because restaurants, once they collect meals tax, have to turn it over. And it's not ever supposed to go to their operating expenses. We only have one restaurant per se open. And then a couple of other places that pay some meals tax for prepared food. So there's that information.
What does it take for someone's water to get turned off for non-payment? Because I think at the very least, I am in favor of not turning off any water until we're through this.
So by state law, you have to have 60 days after they've been served, after it's passed due. Typically Wendy told me that they'll get about 15 on due date that would be eligible for cutoff. And by the time they get to cutoff, we only have two or three each month. We haven't seen a rise in that yet, but the water bills were due a couple of weeks ago and they're not due until the 20th. So we'll see then what that is. Again, I think Jason's concern was if we don't cut off residents, how could we justify not cutting off some of the larger businesses versus just not making people pay the penalty if they're late?
Well, we still, still charge them for it. We just never, we don't cut them off. And then eventually they do have to pay it. And there isn't a late fee or anything else on top of it, but they're still getting the water that they need. I, I don't know.
With a possible, with a possible extended late fee term. Or no fee.
Yeah. For me, what I think is appropriate is us not turning off water, not putting a late fee, not putting any additional charges for late payment, not changing the rates and still billing it. And they'll get it to us when, when they get it to us after this is done.
Jason, is there a way for us to, to require that somebody show us that their lack of payment is due to being laid off or other conditions? Or do we just?
Well, then who's going to make that determination? You know, that, that's something that, I mean, you would have, no, not, not an easy way to do that. No, I mean, you would have to try and draft it. So it was kind of a black and white thing for the treasurer to decide. I, I don't think there's a, there's an easy way, there is not a, a way to just do that where you can, on a person by person basis, decide that this person that has need and, and we can't bill them. We're not really set up for that. It's almost like a court situation if you're, you're asking for.
And not everyone is getting tested. So, I mean, you couldn't say that it was because of that necessarily in all cases when it was. And the amount of ripple that like, yes, my business closed because of this is pretty far along. Like, yeah, the auto rental closed because of this, because no one is traveling anymore. Like you have to make a lot of logical jumps that are accurate, but I think we just not do it.
You just take, you just, if people don't pay, they don't pay.
Yeah. That's just my, you know, I, I want to hear from other people.
Well, you can think what the federal government's doing with their stimulus checks. When they're not looking at need base because it's too complicated.
So are we, like our motions that we've done earlier, are we using the governor's announcement or his declaration that it's all clear as a sign, as kind of like, that's when the state sees this emergency done?
Yes.
Okay. So I was wondering if we want to put a timeline on it. So we don't have people not paying late charges or not making payments on past due. If somehow we could write this between, you know, our meeting April 13th, whenever it is, until the governor of the state of Virginia announces the emergency's ended. You know, late charges during that time period will be waived or interest down to zero. Water will continue to be calculated and paid if, you know, if you don't pay, you know, you don't have a late charge. But then once that emergency's lifted, then that's when, that day going forward on late payments, then we would, you know, start instituting that again. So I guess we're only stick to collecting water or any taxes, late payments. And then water, we end up shutting it off to make them come back and pay. But I guess short of doing a judgment, the late payments are stick to collect the taxes?
So that, my only, that'd be fine to do in any kind of normal situation. But you've got one person that you really want or one entity that really has to pay their water bill on time. And Angela, do we have a separate contract with Cargill requiring them to pay X dollars at Y time?
I don't believe so Susan.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't think you do either. They actually had asked for that years ago. And so that's the problem with that. You know, if we set the late charge at zero and don't charge interest, and I'm not saying they would do this, but an economically rational, rational business that pays us hundreds of thousands of dollars a month is going to stop paying us.
Unless it becomes a public relations nightmare for them.
That payment's going to be backlog. So if they pay us a million dollars a month, they don't pay us for three months. At the end of that three months, we're going to lose $3 million. So it's not like, I mean, you're, you're cash flowing now. But now if you've got a business that has an issue with cash flow, yeah, you want to defer all your payments as much as you can. But if you've got a business that does cash flow, you don't want to build up past due payments. You have to pay back anyway. If you're just, if, if they're in an economic issue where they're just trying to keep their business afloat, and they're not going to pay their water electric bill, then we've got bigger problems than, than this.
Well, I'm sure they'd be happy to have three million bucks sitting in a bank account for three months rather than giving it to us. And, and I, and this is an extreme scenario, but that's what they could do if, if you did that.
Well, and then at some point when the emergency is lifted, we start charging interest on the back payments. And they're, they've saved up all this bill that they have to pay and not paid any.
And there's no way to, and there's no way to differentiate residents versus business? I mean, I mean, this, this is mainly for residents.
Well, that's what Angela asked me. And, and, you know, everything that council does is subject to a rational basis standard. And, you know, what, what's the rational basis for doing this for, you know, homeowners or, or residents and not businesses? Everyone is affected by COVID-19. And so I, I have a, and again, anything you do, I, I try to make it so you're not going to get sued. And if you do something that, that specifically excludes one entity that's got a lot of money on the line, that, that is of concern. And I know we have good relations with Cargill and there's no problem. But boy, there'll be a conversation over that plant that says, hey, we could do this. And maybe they'll decide not to, but I would rather you didn't subject yourself to that possibility.
The other consideration, like Jason said, is that people will be getting their stimulus checks. And the whole purpose of the stimulus is to keep people going. The other point is to set the deadline of when the governor announces that the emergency's over, which right now the executive order 55 has a June date in it, but says it can be rescinded or extended if need be. But if you stop it right when the emergency's over, keep in mind that the economic impact of this is going to last much longer than, than when the virus goes away. So I think you'll have people coming back in worse shape in June, July and August than they are right now. So if you choose to wait and see what kind of requests we get and then take action, you certainly could do that as well. Based on, I don't know if the stimulus checks are really coming out in another two weeks like they said.
Unfortunately, from what Jason's saying, we can't retro any of this stuff. So if somebody ends up being two months behind because of this, and then we put in a policy that they don't get the benefit because we can't retroactive and decision. Because I like to do that. That'd be nice to kind of wait and see how affected our residents are before making a, a decision. But then by that time, it sounds like it would be too late.
All right. Is there a consensus of council or something that you want us to prepare before next week? All the bills aren't due until next week, any, or later after your meeting next time anyway. Real estate, water, trash, they're all not due right away. So we don't have to make a decision tonight. But if you want us to research that way or analyze something, we just need to know.
I haven't changed my mind on what my thought is.
Okay.
But I'm one person.
And RJ, that thought is?
Uh, no late fees, no interest on past due amounts, and water will not be turned off for the duration of this. I think we may just have to bite a bullet with Cargill and it sucks, but this is more important.
And that would apply just to water.
They're not going to want a, a public relations nightmare if they decided to quit paying their bills.
And I think also that if we get in that situation, Angela might be able to conversation with them and say, look, that's not what this was for.
Or you can undo it.
And set a really high interest rate on past due payments. I do like Jeff's idea of there being an endpoint and then it starting though after that point.
Starting at the point that the, that things get back to normal.
Well, I'll leave it at this, the, unless the mayor has some of the packets, will be prepared Wednesday and Thursday. So if anybody has any other ideas or considerations, that would be, the next couple of days would be a time to get them to me.
Well, and I, I have a sort of a question to, for me to sort of try and figure out what to do mechanically with respect to what RJ said, I'm happy to do that. But if there's only one council member that is interested in, in pursuing that, and certainly we're taking a straw poll today, but it's sort of silly for me to spend your taxpayer resources if, if, if there's only one person interested in that.
I agree that that is silly if I'm the only person who wants this.
Beth, Carrie, Tara, anybody?
I'm not as worried about Cargill. Hopefully they've got the, the ethical backbone and they just continue doing what they're doing. But I mean, I, I, I understand what Jason's saying. And like I said, everything works until it doesn't. And then when it does, it's done. So there's that possibility, small possibility that Cargill could say, you know what, whatever, we're not going to pay it. Or they can get, you know, employees over there with the virus and they, you know, can't make their payments anyway. So it's really here and there. All you're going to do is collect late charges. So I guess I'd have to lean towards, you know, believing that people aren't going to take advantage of this. And, and at least we've got it on the books prior to people needing it. You know, and, and setting some kind of an end date would be something I'd be in favor of. So I'm, I'm on board to seeing kind of what that looks like for our next meeting with the waiver of the late fees and interest on water bills and not turning off water for, for late payments until after this is over.
But if you're going to do that, you do have to have a end date. We just can't say forever that, you know, nine months from now that we're still not paying because of, you know, COVID-19.
I think what I heard was until the governor announces the emergency has ended. And then we could bring it back to you if you guys choose to.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah. And I understand that the economic effect is going to lag on past. Because when everybody gets back to work, they don't get paid the first day. So yeah, I understand that.
It's, it's going to have to be a, we'll have to talk about a time past the day that he says everything is back to normal.
Right. When, when he announces it, would be a good way for us to revisit how we want to make that change. Depending on how many take it, maybe there's only five people, maybe there's 100 people, who knows? Then at that time, we can make a decision on how we want to, you know, extend it or rescind it at that point.
Would this mean that the entire balance is due within 60 days of the governor giving the all clear prior to the water being shut off?
It, it, that could be what it means.
I believe it's 60 days after they get noticed that they're late. Right, Jason?
Well, what, what RJ is suggesting, we would make, set the late fee at zero, set the interest rate at 0%, but it's still due. And so at the point that you then decide to start charging interest, well, let's say someone's gone four months without paying. Well, now they've got it for maybe 300 bucks. And now they owe us the 300 bucks and now they have to start paying interest on it. And now they have to start paying a penalty on it. So that could end up being a big, big thing at the end of that. But that's, you know, if that's what you want to do, you, you can.
And that's down the road.
That's right.
Does, does that set us up though for turning off a lot of people's water that ultimately can't come back and pay after 60 days, you know, when they have this huge lump sum that's due, then all of a sudden they can't pay? Are we having to go through that process of, of turning off water? Yes. And then you, and then you've placed yourself in a situation in which you can't undo that. Because you bill, which is why, again, I, I think, you know, and I know that this isn't what, what RJ and Jeff have suggested. But, you know, if you're interested in giving away town money legally, not charging for trash is one easy way to do it. Because that's not going to bite anybody later, other than the town costing the town money. Not charging for interest, late fees, et cetera, might be fine. But it might very well create a situation where people have got these big bills that they can't pay in, in the fall.
Yeah. But if we turn off a water, let's say six months from now, that's not a health emergency for that family in addition to a financial emergency. If we turn off water now because we have to under our current structures, that's then an additional emergency.
I'll, I'll tell you that the governor has said that public utilities may not turn off utilities right now. We actually don't meet, meet the definition of public utility. But you would be basically doing what the, the governor is doing and, and, and basically treating Dayton as a, as a public utility as that term is defined. basically treating Dayton as a, as a public utility as that term is defined.
Yeah, actually, you're not gonna, the town of Dayton, it would be ridiculous to turn off somebody's water in the middle of this. We just, we'd have a PR problem that would just be there. And then we'd have to do anything about it, you know, then be like, why didn't you do anything about it? So I think we need to look at a way to do this practically instead of, oh, and then, and go back and retweet. You can see what it looks like and how it can be worded. And then when it comes time to, to, to this is over, then it's our, our collection policy that we can, we can, you know, write up then, you know, for, you know, people that are past due, you know, they're gonna have a certain amount of time to get their payments in, or just like we would now. We've had people way past, you know, we've had people that were almost turning water off on it. We've taken payments on and worked with them and that sort of thing. So there's collection efforts we can do at the back end of this to, you know, make sure they don't just owe, you know, 500 bucks right now unless your water's going on.
So RJ, you're not planning on changing the rate? Just you want the late fee and no interest? No late fee, no interest?
Because that, that then addresses the problem that you had talked about with, like, that we already have this super low rate. We're not changing the rate, we're just not billing any fees or interest on past.
And if I can figure a way to make that apply only to residents, as I will. Angela asked me this question earlier today, and I, I couldn't think of a way to do that. I'll, I'll think about that some more. And I'll come to the next meeting with a code section amendment that does what she said.
I, I would say if you get into just residents versus businesses, you've got small businesses, especially restaurants and retail that have had to close down, who would want relief just as much as residents? And I'm guessing there's, guessing there's no way for us to do industrial versus other commercial.
Well, that, that's, you and I can talk and we can see exactly what Cargill category, Cargill fits into. And if we can do it that way, we will. I will word it so that it is, you know, until the governor's order is lifted or until further action of the council, whichever first occurs. Because I, I want you to keep the flexibility. In case the governor does weird things, you'd rather be in control of your own funding source, I think.
Okay. I like that. No late fee, no interest. Any other comments on that? All right. Item D, consideration of temporary personnel policy.
And I apologize to Personnel Committee. I had originally put something out to them a couple of weeks ago, and then just decided since we are meeting tonight to look at this personnel policy. If somebody were to get the virus, they would stay home just like anybody else with the flu, and they would use their PTO as sick leave. But if somebody were to be in direct contact with a family member or somebody on the job that was tested positive, we would force them to stay home for two weeks to protect the rest of the staff. And my question is, does council want to consider a temporary personnel policy to pay people that we forced to stay home? I know that's what some businesses are doing.
And I'm sorry, I've talked a lot this meeting, but there's legislation on this too. The, there's a new federal law that affects the town of Dayton that requires employers to provide two weeks of paid leave to anybody affected by COVID-19. So even though your personnel policy doesn't reflect that, if someone's got two weeks of PTO in their bank, and they also, and they have a COVID-19 related issue, it's not just.
Jason, we lost you.
You are.
Can you repeat that? We lost you for a minute.
Yeah, sorry, somebody called me and it's linked to my iPad, so it's kicked me off. So let's say you have a town employee that has two weeks of PTO, and they get COVID-19 or their spouse does, or they are ordered to be quarantined. There's a whole list of stuff, but it's all COVID-19 related stuff. Then that town employee automatically gets another two weeks of leave paid by the town of Dayton. Doesn't matter that they've exhausted all their PTO, doesn't matter what our policies, our personnel policy says. Automatically they get that extra two weeks. So you certainly can provide more than that. But I wanted council to know what you were already subject to as of about 10 days ago.
My understanding though is that if somebody has PTO and they get the virus, we can have them take their PTO, correct? Before we pay them, we pay them. Sorry, the insurance company's webinar is Thursday.
Yeah, no, it's on top of whatever else they have.
So that's written for us.
All right.
Well, that's, Jason, you sure it's not after they use their PTO time on that legislation?
Tell me again.
That's, so you're saying that, that, that is, that precedes the use of PTO time?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at what we got from Truck Enterprises on this. And it was, yeah, there's, there's two weeks of paid sick time at any employee's regular pay where the employee is unable to work because the employee's quarantined, blah, 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 and experienced COVID symptoms, two weeks sick time, two thirds of the employee's regular pay because the employee's unable to work because of the bona fide need care for individuals as well. So, so there's two weeks there. Okay, so I wasn't, I was kind of unsure if they had to be out of their own PTO time before this, or so they use this instead of their PTO time.
Jeff, you're thinking of FMLA.
Okay. Okay, this is different, okay.
It's federal, and like even my employees that don't have benefits, if they COVID-19, I gotta pay them for two weeks with them being off.
Right. So this supersedes any, any vacation or sick time they normally have. Then they would use the sick time from the business.
Yes.
Anything else on that?
No, just as we go forward, if, if this continues for a while, and it looks like we have enough budget issues that we would be forced to furlough employees, I would ask us to start looking at whether or not we would provide health insurance benefits for a certain period of time. We don't have a severance package for such situations. But I know some of the larger counties that have been laying off a large number of employees are providing health benefits for three to six months. We don't need to decide that tonight, but something to think about in the long term.
I'd be in favor of that.
Any other comments? All right, with that, I need a motion to convene into a closed session under section 2.23711A7 Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel and to be briefed by staff members or consultants about the actual litigation of the town of Dayton versus Judy Shite. For such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the local government's negotiating or litigating posture.
So I'm moved. And, and I'm sorry, did you include the state code reference? It faded out briefly.
Uh, yes, yes, I did. I'll, I'll say it again, 2.2-3711A7 Code of the Virginia.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, was that you, Carrie?
Carrie, did you make the motion?
I did. I'll second.
Who was the second?
Zach.
Thank you, Zach, I'm sorry. And roll call, please.
All right, if everybody can unmute for me, please. Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Ms. Loribey.
Hi.
Mr. Fletchall.
Hi.
Mr. Jackson.
Hi.
Mr. Ogrin.
Hi.
And Mayor Lee.
Hi.
We are in closed session.
Not quite yet, Krista's got to lock out everybody except for council members.
Yes, I will do that now.
Okay.
Bye, Justin, bye, Susan, bye, everybody.